Okay, thanks to all that have joined us here in favor this evening, as well as those that have joined us from home. This is a meeting of the Pecosin City Council for Monday, March 25th. I'll call this meeting to order, and I would like to lead you in invocation, and then I would ask the Girls Troop 10-12 to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance from the podium, if we could. All right, if we could all please rise.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this day, and thank you for the many blessings we've received in our city. As we move forward on several issues this evening, we ask for a portion of your wisdom, and that we be fair to all the citizens that depend on those decisions. We always ask for your wisdom, your strength, and your presence, that they be felt by those in our Public Safety Department, in our military, whether they be federal, state, or local, and especially those serving in foreign lands, those who protect us while we sleep safely here within our city. We ask for that in your son's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, girls. Okay, I have two special presentations this evening. I'm going to read them from the other podium, and the first one is a proclamation recognizing Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Is there somebody from the Exchange Club that would like to join me? I know this is something that you...
Come right on. You can all come up if you'd like. It's good to see all of you, so come on up.
I don't think it's right to wake us up.
I hope that y'all brought council one of your shirts.
It can be arranged.
I'd like to read this proclamation. I know this is something especially important to the Exchange Club, but this is a proclamation for the city of Pecosin, as we applaud the Exchange Club of Pecosin for its dedicated work in the prevention of child abuse in our community, and where as the city of Pecosin commends the Exchange Club of Pecosin for its promotion of ongoing programs in our community which are designed to help prevent child abuse, and where as the city of Pecosin stands firmly on the side of prevention of any type of abuse, and believes no child should endure verbal, emotional, or physical abuse for any reason, and where as the National Exchange Club adopted the prevention of child abuse as its national project in 1979 in response to a request by its national president, who, as a physician, noticed an increase in child abuse cases in his medical practice. Since then, April has been designated as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and the city of Pecosin supports and encourages all of our residents and our community leaders to wear blue each Monday in April in observance of Child Abuse Prevention Month. Therefore, I, W. Eugene Hunt, Jr., Mayor of the city of Pecosin, do proclaim the month of April to be Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Pecosin in recognition of our commitment to healthy, happy children, and to help eradicate child abuse in our community, and to support the efforts of the Exchange Club of Pecosin and all others who observe this important cause in their mission to bring awareness of this problem to the forefront, and to help make our community a stronger and more loving, where city where children will be able to grow and thrive without fear. So, thank y'all for bringing this. Thank you for wearing your blue. I wish I had seen the memo. I wore all gray this evening, but thank you for this, and we appreciate everything that you do. Would y'all like to speak at all?
Yes, I'll say a few words.
Go right ahead, sir.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I appreciate the time up here, and appreciate the proclamation. And as previously stated, April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and in conjunction with that, we're joining with the Pecosin Little League on April 13th for a day to distribute literature of what you have in front of you, and we have some other posters and things we'll have on the backboards there, and Pelican snowballs will be there. And I think last year, we gave out over 200 free Pelican snowballs to the youth and their parents, and they received similar literature as we gave you tonight. So, thank you for the recognition.
Thank you.
And on behalf of all the members, thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Gene.
All right, take care.
And Buddy should have told you about the shirt.
Yeah. No, if I could get Walter Apelt to join me here at the podium. Walt, good to see you. Thanks for coming.
Good to be here.
It's really good to see you. I know council's happy to see you. All right. This is an award. It's basically a certificate of appreciation, and this is given to Walter Apelt for his service to the Economic Development Authority of the city of Pecosin from March of 2015 to February of 2019. It's signed by all of council, but what I want to say here is what a great deal of service that you did provide to us. This is one of many things that you have done for the city of Pecosin, and we appreciate all the service through all the years. And we're sorry to see that you're not going to participate, but we certainly understand, and we're thinking great thoughts of you.
I wish it could have been longer.
Okay, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
The next item on the agenda is an Audience for Visitors. The Audience for Visitors is a time where any citizen can come up to the podium and talk about something that they would like council to know about the city, or impress on us some need or desire. So, I'm going to open that Audience for Visitors and ask if somebody would like to talk to council this evening.
The Girl Scouts from Troop 10-12 would like to tell you about a proposal they have.
Please.
They would come here?
Yes, right here. And...
Your names, ladies?
Hello, my name is Kendall Westcott, and we are the Junior Girl Scout Troop 10-12. Thank you for allowing us to present our idea for our Bronze Award project. The Girl Scout Bronze Award is a team project that gets us involved in the community. To earn our Bronze Award, we must come up with a project idea that will improve our community. We also must volunteer our time to help make our ideas a reality. We are here today to help start the planning process for an off-leash dog park. The dogs of Pecosin will love it. We think that a dog park would bring the community together, and so the people of Pecosin would love it, too. Next, we will tell you more about our proposal. These are the requirements we think are needed for our dog park. At least one acre of land, a fence around the park, gates in and out, a handicap accessible entrance and exit, parking for people, grass and flowers, doggy bags, bathrooms, toys, benches, water, recycling bins, trash bins, small tables, water drainage, and lights. Now Bailey with the rules.
Hello, my name is Bailey, and these are the rules we think are needed for our dog park. Dog park, sorry. No dog or human food allowed at all. No aggressive dogs, and dogs must be on leash until in the park. No trash talkers, and always be respectful. All dogs must have their rabies shot. No children allowed without parental supervision, and make sure to clean up after your dog. No smoking or vaping, and most importantly, no alcohol. Must be, and your dog must be spayed or neutered, and there must be no littering. Follow all the rules and have fun. And next is Ashlyn with the park names.
Hello, my name is Ashlyn Jones, and I would like to present the ideas that we came up with for our dog park. The Dogs of Pecosin, Bull Island Dogs, Big Woods Dog Park, 10-12 Dog Park, The Dogs of the Sea, and The Sea Biscuits Park of Pecosin.
Very good. So far, I think y'all have got it covered. I really do. Very good suggestions.
These are our designs.
So, you've got designs, and yet show them to the back. Now, let me... Is there anything else, ladies?
Other scouts, both boys and girl scouts, can help build benches, tables, and exercise equipment for the dogs. We have five girls in our troop. Two were unable to come, but they have contributed to this project. Charlie came up with the idea, and Grayson helped with the design. Thank you for your support and consideration for our dog park proposal.
Okay, thank y'all very much, but let me ask you to do one thing, unless y'all are particularly fond of those posters. I would like you to give them to either Gretchen or Dave back there, who are the leaders of our Parks and Rec Department. I will tell you, young ladies, that... Is there anybody still here from Parks and Rec Advisory Board?
Our vice chair.
So, the vice chair is here, and he's heard what you had to say, because, believe it or not, we were just talking about dog parks right before this meeting. So, please give your suggestions, your rules, and all that stuff to city staff, so that we can say... Okay? Thank you very much. Would anybody like to follow that up and tell us something that's... I didn't think so. All right, I'll close the Audience for Visitors and ask council for consideration of the minutes.
Mayor, would you approve our minutes of the regular session of March 11th, 2019?
Second. Okay, motion made, and second, we approve the minutes of the regular session of March 11th. Questions or comments of council? Seeing none, Evie, please.
Certainly. Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aha.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Canelle.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of 7-0.
Okay, very well. We do have three public hearings this evening. The first is a hearing on the Proposed Constrained Capital Improvements Plan for fiscal year 2020 and beyond fiscal year 2024. Randy will be there, short presentation before. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Members of council, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to present this item. As you know, each year, we prepare a capital improvements plan in partnership with the Planning Commission. In the past year, our planning efforts evolved to a constrained capital improvements plan, and this year is the second installment of that plan in many ways. It is just the next year of the plan that you implemented and approved last year. So, rather than go through it item by item, if I could, I'll just hit some things that are different.
That would be great.
And some maybe things worth of special attention. One, I just would like to point out to you that we continue to make changes to this document to provide clearer linkages to the comprehensive plan, to make it a more readable document. We've included additional information about ongoing projects, projects previously approved that are still in some part of construction, so that we don't have things that sort of fall off the end of the planning document. We don't have an implementation document to go backwards with, so we've included both of those things. Additionally, as a reminder, not so much to you, but to the public that may be watching at home or part of this process, as council is well aware, in the last 12 months, the council authorized, and we borrowed approximately $18 million for a number of important projects that are in the capital improvements plan. The most significant terms of dollars was the middle school project. That project, as you know, the design process is underway, and I would expect plus or minus second quarter of calendar year 2020 to actually have a, through the school board, a construction contract approved, and the initial startup of that project essentially five quarters from now. The superintendent is here, I would note, if you have questions for her. I would also note, too, that the bus associated with that initial borrowing has been acquired, and the various city projects, with the exception of TMDL that were also included in that borrowing, have either been completed or are in process to be completed. You'll see that summary in the memo. Additionally, as council will recall, as part of last year's CCIP process, you established basically a debt division from what was available within the debt capacity of the city, about $23 million. You allocated about 20 of that to schools, 20 of that to schools, with, again, the middle school being the largest part. This budget continues to honor that in terms of sort of the next phases of school projects, but I believe that school division would like to get a little further down the middle school before they decide what's next in terms of the available remaining resources. They have a prioritization, as you're aware. They just want to make sure they can do one fully and correctly before they move on to the next one, which I commend them for. We have a residual amount on the city side of available debt capacity, some of which was contained in that original $23 million total number, and one of, part of which is the updated version of the five-year number, but is outlined in the second paragraph, first paragraph of second page. The non-school debt capacity number is about $5.6 million. That is $5.6 million that is allocated in the plan, at least for now, as a TMDL down payment. We hope that when the final approvals for the SWIFT trade-offs and other things are finally approved by the federal government, state government, that we won't need to hold on to that money. But until we do, we have an unfunded mandate coming our way that's significant. We hope to have already cleared that process of approval already by now, but it's not coming as quickly as we'd hoped, so the underlying recommendation is for the city debt capacity to hold it until, one, we know what that's, what it's going to be; two, to allow us time to complete the feasibility study for the public safety building, which you all authorized the money for recently. So, you'll have that piece of information, and then, of course, we'll have the benefit of your updated CIP. There are many projects referenced already, and not referenced, but contained, that all compete for a relatively small amount of capital bundle. I would also note, and thank you once again for your recent moves to help us in terms of the public works equipment that you approved at your last meeting, that, or two meetings ago. As we reserve our debt capacity, we still have needs, and they're not glamorous needs, but they're very important. When the solid waste trucks aren't working, we've got big problems real fast, and the same with some of the other things. So, we continue to find ways and work with you to do the things we must while preserving your decision in the future on some of these larger things. And that's really the overall framework for the CIP. For those watching at home, it's about $14 million from various funding sources across a five-year period, not counting the state appropriation, and the almost 100% of the state appropriation is a little less than $20 million for the With Creek Riding project, and that's the Pecosin side of the project. The summary of recommended projects is on pages four and five of the document. The departmental requests, we present them all, even though we can't fit them all in the constrained plan, are in pages seven through nine, and I would draw special attention to page 10, which is a brief summarization, one place of all the new projects that came in, and they're typically year-five projects, but as new things come in, draw special attention to them. The single largest switch of the new projects is the replacement of the turf field at the middle school. To answer any questions you may have, and following the public hearing, the council has certainly the option to approve or amend and approve the CIP, or if the council would prefer, to table that decision so that we can schedule a follow-up work session.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Questions, Randy? Okay. If not, then I'd like to open the public hearing, if there's any comments from somebody in the audience on the constrained CIP. Now is that time. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for consideration by council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution approving the constrained capital improvements plan for fiscal year 2020 and beyond fiscal year 2024.
Second. Okay, motion made, and second, that we adopt the plan as is. I would commend staff, you make us look good. It's nice of you to thank council for all of our decisions, but most of those, you've set up for us very well. And again, it's the reason that we are succeeding in a lot of these things is because of our staff here within the city, and our cooperation between the boards, including the school board and the schools in general. So, I commend all of those players as we move forward with this. So, Evie, please.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Canelle.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of 7-0.
Okay, the next public hearing is a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance, Section 1, Tac 8, to clarify the requirements for applications for uses not specifically permitted. Mr. Horton's going to present for staff, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is, you know, text-wise, it's fairly simple. It's just kind of making something clearer that was not as clear as it could be. So, with that, I'll get started. Advertisement date for public hearings, this is true not just for this hearing, but the next one, too. Planning Commission was, we did run ads for the Planning Commission hearing back in February 21st on the 1st and the 8th of the month. City Council ads ran on March 8th, 2019, and March 15th, 2019, also in the Daily Press. So, as I said in my ever-so-brief introduction, it's been subject to conflicting interpretations due to vague and ambiguous language of the requirement. Here's the current wording. Section 1-8, application for use not specifically permitted. If, in any district established under this ordinance, a use is not specifically permitted, and an application is made by a property owner to the zoning administrator for such use, the zoning administrator shall refer the application to the Planning Commission, which shall make its recommendation to the city council within 60 days. I supplied the memo for the Planning Commission meeting, where we were basically looking at two choices. One, that would sort of follow, I guess it's fair to say, our interpretation of the ordinance up until maybe in the past year, when we've looked at the language and we've said, well, you know, really, what is this saying? Is this saying that, you know, you could only allow it in a, if it's not allowed anywhere in the city, or can you allow it, you know, if it's just that district? So, the Planning Commission, well, this is just a relative and argue over what it means. We're going to make it clear. The Planning Commission did choose to recommend by five-to-one vote the following language at February, at its February 21st, 2019, public hearing. And I've underlined the changes, and I will read it, though, for the benefit of those at home and in the audience. If, within a particular zoning district established under this ordinance, particular zoning district, a use is not specifically permitted, and an application is made by the property owner to the zoning administrator for such use, the zoning administrator shall refer the application to the Planning Commission, which will make its recommendation to the city council within 60 days. So, it's only a few words of change, but it does make it a lot clearer. And we added this part, just to be clear, I think it's understood, but such an application shall not be made if the use is explicitly forbidden in the district for which the use is proposed. You remember, a few months ago, the city council looked at tattoo parlors, which were explicitly forbidden in village commercials, so obviously, we wouldn't consider a conditional use permit in that section. But what this really means is that, let's say a use is allowed in the B2 district. Somebody wants to go into any district, could be residential, could be, you know, GC or village community, village commercial, rather, they would be able to apply for a conditional use permit. The best example I can give you from something that we're tussling with right now at the staff level would be a storage yard. We have a storage yard in a residential zone, which we're dealing with. This language would allow a person to apply for a conditional use permit for that use, whereas if we took another route, and we said, you know, it can't be allowed anywhere, and it's allowed in B2, so you have to move to B2, that's the difference. This is the more, the more liberal of the two, if I can use the word liberal, the more permissive of the two interpretations. That's essentially it. I mean, our ultimate goal here is to make the ordinance clearer, and I believe that Strategy 21 under the comprehensive plan talks about reviewing and updating city zoning subdivision site plan and sign ordinances, which we're going to get around to, to ensure coherence, clarity, and compliance with current law and development practices. So, we're just trying to make it clear. Staff feels that by adopting this option, we're accomplishing the goals of the comprehensive plan, we're providing clarity, and with that, you know, any future applicant, we can be clear with them, which ultimately, you really want to be. I mean, we need to be able to give the applicant answers. So, that's where we are. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Any questions, council? Basically, what I hear is more of a housekeeping item, to make it clear, and this is a practice that we have historically been doing, but now the language supports that. Yes, sir. That's correct. Okay. And that was my understanding. Okay, thank you, Walt.
Thank you.
All right, I'll open the public here, if there's anybody that would like to speak on this item. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for consideration by council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance by revising Appendix A, Article 1, Section 1-8, application for use not specifically permitted.
Second. Okay, motion made, and second, that we approve this. Any final comments of council? Seeing none, Evie, please.
Certainly. Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Canelle.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of 7-0.
Okay, thank you very much. The final public hearing this evening is a proposed amendment to zoning and site plan ordinances to accommodate brew pubs and craft and microbreweries. So, I think I know what this might be about, but go ahead.
Right, right. The city has been asked about the allowance of brew pubs and craft microbreweries, about their use in the B2 zoning district. Currently, we don't allow it at all. Based on the last decision, anybody wanting to do such a use would have to apply for a conditional use permit. So, this is a way of just sort of streamlining it and allowing this use by right in B2 without having to go through a conditional use permit. Even though this request, or this inquiry, I'll put it like that, came from one particular establishment, of course, we have to... establishment, of course, we have to look at any particular establishment that may come in. We're not changing the ordinance for one person, we're changing it to, to bring in a use that could be beneficial to the city. To that, it's important to keep in mind that craft breweries have become integral parts of economic development, and they do, have been shown to benefit economies, which obviously is a focus of the city. Nearby localities have recognized the value of this type of business as the use is allowance, allowed in a lot of counties and citizens in Virginia. Zoning districts where the use is allowed by right include business equivalent and industrial-zoned areas, and, and that's certainly true, as you look around to our neighbors. I provided, and I don't really think I need to go into detail on this tonight, but I did provide a few websites in the report, which certainly elaborate on the value of craft microbreweries and brew pubs, which is the restaurant aspect essentially of a microbrewery. Just to get our terms straight, a brew pub has a microbrewery on the premise, so it's, you know, you're selling 25% or so of what you manufacture through the brew pub, at least. And, of course, you can have a craft microbrewery without a brew pub, you know, you can just be in the business of making beer up to 35,000 barrels per year, which is a lot of gallons, but each barrel's about 31 gallons. Plenty of guidance under the comprehensive plan. You know, generally under land use, we're trying to enforce a pattern of land use and development that reinforces and improves the quality of life of citizens and assists in achieving the goals of the comprehensive plan in economics, environment, housing, utilities, transportation, and recreation. Several objectives, objectives, sorry, is to concentrate commercial development and a unified, accessible commercial district, which is why we're advocating B2. Promote the use of land in a manner that is harmonious with other uses and does not negatively impact the natural environment. Well, most of our B2 is off of With Creek Road, it's got the accessibility in terms of roads and, and development patterns, so it fits there, basically. Promote the use of land consistent with the capacity of existing and planned public facilities and services, I think I just touched on that with the last comment, and the city's ability to provide such facilities and services. Obviously, B2 is one of those areas. Strategies, this kind of breaks it down into the smaller, the smaller elements. Encourage all future commercial development to be located in the vicinity of Big Woods and along With Creek Road, with close proximity to Victory Boulevard, B2 would do that. Encourage a variety of commercial uses that will expand and stabilize the city's tax base. Obviously, economic development potential is there. Review, and, and, you know, this number 21 is going to be familiar as, as we go forward, but review and update city zoning subdivision site plan and sign ordinances to ensure coherence, clarity, and compliance with current law and development practices, and that's certainly what this would do. Definitions, again, we've got a definition of brew pub, added in section one dash three. It's a craft microbrewery that operates in conjunction with a retail tavern or pub, restaurant on the premises. And then the craft microbrewery, which I think explained, I said 35,000, I'll stand corrected, it's 15,000 barrels of beer per year, and barrel is 31 gallons. You might have accessory uses such as tasting rooms, even for beverages produced on-site, restaurants, reception halls, and, and, you know, in those reception halls, you may have a lot of entertainment as well. Uh-oh, that's my fault, I hit the wrong button. Article 10, section 10 to A, this is in the B2 district, is going to say that craft microbrewery and brew pub is allowed by right. And we go to the site plan ordinance, which is where our parking requirements are. So we're in Appendix C, Article One, section one dash oh eight, under minimum off-street parking requirements, and it talks about commercial uses. And the thing about these commercial uses is that they're laid out as having specific parking regulations for each use. There's a number of them under there, but this would add a brew pub under, under V, and would add a craft microbrewery under W, which I'll get to on the other. I think what's really of note here is that we are trying to differentiate between the non-public area and the public area. Certainly, the public area is going to be your larger generator of traffic, and we've tried to make that consistent with our shopping center requirements, one per 200 square feet in public areas. Non-public, when you have a brewery or kitchen, it's, it's, it's really sort of an industrial use. We're doing one, one part of space per every two employees, that's used on the largest shift, essentially. That's true of brew pubs, and that is also true of craft microbreweries. We're still staying in the public areas for one per 200 square feet, and the one space per each, two employees on the maximum working shift for the non-public areas. Off-street loading space, it's currently section one dash oh eight D of the site plan ordinance, but I would suggest that maybe there, and, and it's in the, it's in the, the ordinance too, that refers to section one oh eight D, but because the site plan ordinance may get changed over time, it might be good just to say be provided in accord with the site plan ordinance, not, not, not referred to that particular section. And I think I had that section up there, I had that section up there for brew pub as well. So that, that comment, that comment is the same for both of those, both of those uses. Again, staff does have a recommendation, you know the planning commission's recommendation, they did vote six oh to pass this along for the B2 district. By adopting the proposed amendments, the goals, objectives, and strategies of the 2018-2038 comprehensive plan will be adhered to. Therefore, staff is supportive of the amendment, and, of course, the regulations will be coherent for any future applicants. With that said, I'll be quiet and take any questions you might have.
Questions, council?
I had one. Do we think there's going to be like a giant influx of brew pubs that require us to amend the ordinance as opposed to just doing it the way we have been with a conditional use permit? Because it could still come with a conditional use permit, right?
You can still do it that way.
I'm just wondering, like, do we think we're gonna, I guess I'm asking why we would want to add it as opposed to just doing a conditional use permit? What are the, what are the?
I think we have one that's definitely going to take advantage of it, but forecasting out into the future, that's, you know, I, I can't tell you that there's going to be more than that one. It would stand to reason that, you know, if, if the one does well, there, there might be another one that wants to locate here, but I can't, I can't tell you there'll be a lot.
What is the benefit of adding that to the ordinance as opposed to just having them apply for a conditional use permit?
Well, time is one element that, that is, that is a saving thing. And then, of course, when you go through a conditional use permit, you have less assurance that it's going to be approved. I mean, even though, I mean, I'm sure the city council generally looks favorably on that, but to an applicant looking at it, they see more process, they see more uncertainty. And uncertainty is something that people who want to do a particular use, they don't really, they don't really like it that much, so.
Can I add one point?
Yeah, absolutely.
And it's, it's, just to add one point, and it's not specific to brew pubs, but to the extent that something is by right, and it's something that is desirable in the city, by making it by right, it helps focus that desirable use, assuming it is one, in the area that you want it to be. If you make it so that every place is accessible equally through a conditional use permit process, they may not choose the location that might be best for them in terms of a complex. We've seen that in the past, where people sought conditional use permits for things that weren't available in that zoning district, but were available in others, and times they even had vacant spaces, but it was cheaper to go outside the district. So, to provide the, to provide the place where you think it is most appropriate, actually provides a time and small monetary incentive for it actually to locate in the place you think is most appropriate.
Okay.
Yeah?
Any other questions?
Makes it easier for businesses to come into the city and, and open up. I think that's probably a good thing.
Okay.
Yeah, I would think that a business owner that would want to do a business like this, looking at two bodies he's got to go before, and you can put all kinds of conditions on him, is going to be reluctant to come here when he can go somewhere else and do it by right. I think it makes much more sense to, to have it by right.
Okay. So, any questions, Wally? Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to open the public hearing at this point and ask if there's anybody that would like to speak on this issue. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the audience for visitors and ask for consideration by council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance by revising Appendix A, section one dash three pertaining to definitions and Article 10, section 10 dash two A pertaining to permitted uses, and section one dash oh eight C1 for the site plan ordinance pertaining to parking requirements.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second, that we approve this change in the zoning and site plan ordinances. Questions or final comments?
Could I make a comment out of it?
Yes.
A suggestion was made, based on what we had, that in, under number three, on the brew pub number three, it says, provided in accordance with section one dash one oh eight D of the site plan ordinance, suggested is to remove the section reference and just simply say, in accordance with the site plan ordinance. It was named, named under craft brewery number three, because if we change the site plan ordinance as any of them, and I'll have to go back in a minute, this ordinance, if we just simply refer to the master ordinance, we've, we've covered the property issues. So, I would suggest that we strike the language that says, in accordance, and we can strike with section one dash one oh eight D, just simply say in accordance with the site plan ordinance.
Can I get a motion, that we modify that?
I'm in my motion to reflect that.
Okay, in the second?
Second.
Okay. All right, so as modified there, we're going to modify the zoning and site plan ordinance. Final comments, council? Okay, seeing none, E.V., please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Canela.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven, zero.
Okay. Under new business this evening, we have, it's like five items. First is an ordinance making additional appropriations for fiscal year 2019. This would deal with With Creek Road milling and repaving, With Creek Road signal upgrade, and Pecoson Avenue sidewalks.
Absolutely. As you mentioned earlier, this is kind of a housekeeping items for us. You have an ordinance in front of you tonight for three projects. You have already previously approved the projects with the engineering department. Again, this is just allowing us to encumber money as we go through these projects. Of course, the milling has already been done, so we're now in the process of getting the reimbursement back. In the future, as the engineer department and the finance department, we're going to work to make sure the resolutions and the ordinance come all together at once, so we don't have to bring these housekeeping items back. So tonight, I'm asking for an appropriation for the milling and repaving of about 148, the signal upgrade of 278, and then the sidewalk of 314.
Okay. Questions? Is there a motion on this?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations for fiscal year 2019 for the milling and repaving of With Creek Road, signal upgrade, and Pecoson Avenue sidewalks.
Second.
A motion made in second, that we approve this ordinance. Questions, council? I think the other thing to point out here is the Pecoson Avenue sidewalk, which I've been talking about briefly in the work session.
It is.
This is the one that ties in the existing sidewalk infrastructure to.
The two campuses.
To municipal park.
Correct.
It will, at its core, it ties in the middle school complex, which takes in the middle school and the elementary school, with the high school and the primary school through a connection to municipal, but further into that, it will actually create a, a connection all the way down to, to South Austin Park.
Okay. All right, E.V., please.
Certainly. Councilman Canela.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven, zero.
Okay. The next is a resolution to authorize the city manager to enter into contracts with Virginia Public Works Equipment and Houston Freightliner for the purchase of a dump truck and a debris truck.
Okay, and council, tonight, in, in representing Public Works, our fleet, I have John Ellis with us for any questions, but this is kind of standard. We are using a rider clause on two companies or two industries, National Joint Alliance and then Houston Galveston, which happens to be the same company that are the same alliance that we use for the mini pumper that you saw out earlier today. But both of these are within their right to do so. However, I'm asking for the resolution approval for the city manager to enter into contract to purchase these two vehicles or two trucks. One of them is a 2020 Freightliner debris truck of 156K, and then the other one is a 2020 Freightliner of a dump truck of 146. The good thing about this, for John's purposes, both of these are Freightliners, so he'll be able to work on both of the vehicles versus having a Freightliner and some other type of one.
Okay. Questions?
I would note to the council that you approved the funding for this two meetings ago, but because the contracts are each separately or together in excess of $100,000, it has to come back to you for award.
Okay, very good. Will you let Buddy drive the truck?
[laughter]
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to proceed?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution to authorize the city manager to enter into contracts with Virginia Public Works Equipment and Houston Freightliner.
There, second?
Second.
Okay, motion made in second, that we approve this resolution and authorize our city manager enter, enter, enter into that contract. E.V., please.
Certainly. Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Canela.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven, zero.
Very good. Next is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with TJ Crooks Incorporated for the breakwater at Messick Point.
Mr. Mayor, Garrett Fagans from our engineering department will present this item.
Yes, so as you know, the city was awarded a Virginia Port Authority grant to construct a third breakwater at Messick Point. The city issued invitation for bids for construction on February 3rd, 2019, and the bids were open on February 27th. Four companies submitted bids, and after we reviewed the bids and checked the references, staff has recommended that, that the city contract with TJ Crooks, Inc., who's the low bidder. This resolution authorizes the city manager to enter into an agreement with TJ Crooks for construction services, and it authorizes the city manager to modify the scope of services as necessary during the project.
Questions?
I, I have one, and maybe this is just me losing track, and the repair of the existing breakwater from damage, is that now done? Okay, I just missed that one, sorry. Okay.
Sort of a follow-up, do we have some kind of warranty agreement in case it does like the last one and just destroys itself?
There is a one-year agreement as it relates to this with the current bidder, with TJ Crooks, so yes.
Okay.
As long as we'll pay for it.
Okay, very well. All right, is there a motion to proceed with us?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with TJ Crooks Incorporated for construction of a breakwater at Messick Point, and I hope his name doesn't refer to the.
Yeah.
Conduct of that company.
Second.
Okay. Motion made in second, we proceed with this extension of the breakwater at Messick Point by using grant money. Appreciate staff's diligence on both the bid process, getting it under contract, but not only that, but the application for the grant that enabled it. So, thank you very much to all those that participated in this. So with that said, E.V., please.
Certainly. Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilman Canela.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of 7-0.
Okay. The next item is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for professional auditing services with Cherry Becker, LLP.
Okay. The city issued an RFP, which is a little different than the one we just discussed, which is an IFB with an RFP. We did not know the price. We had four firms very qualified to provide us quotes, or proposals, I should say. We interviewed three of those firms, but it was the committee's recommendation to continue with Cherry Becker. So presented in front of to you is a contract. Now, this is a little different because Randy mentioned, the city manager mentioned earlier, that he has the authority under $100,000, since this is a three-year contract that we're entering into, it exceeds that threshold, so we're bringing it in front of to you. So I'm asking for the resolution to authorize the city manager for the audit for FY 19, 20, '21 with a two-one-year extension after that.
Okay. Questions? Thank you. Is there a motion to proceed with this item?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for professional auditing services with Cherry Becker, LLP.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second that we continue our auditing relationship with Cherry Becker, and appreciate their services and appreciate their future services. So, E.V., please.
Certainly. Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Canela.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the vote carried by, the motion carried by a vote of 7-0.
Okay. And the last item under new business is a resolution making appointments to the Economic Development Authority and to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Somebody prepared with a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution making appointments to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and the Economic Development Authority with the following names inserted: Charles W. Gatz, Jr. from the Central Precinct, Eden Harris from the Western, Judith Masse at large, Keith Fay at large, and all of their terms will expire March 31, 2022. And for the Economic Development Authority, Thomas J. Bain, Jr., whose term will expire March 31, 2023.
Second.
Okay. Motion made in second, we approve the resolution appointing new members to Economic Development Authority and Parks and Rec Advisory Board with all those names inserted. So, any comments? E.V., please.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Canela.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of 7-0.
Okay. That's it for business, so comments on the city manager?
Nothing this evening, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Council directives, Councilman Hux.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have no comment tonight.
Councilman Green.
Just wanted, Mr. Mayor, to remind everybody tomorrow is the Mobile Food Pantry at the Old City Hall from 10 to 1. Our host this time are the Pocahontas Yacht Club and the Pocahontas Exchange Club.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Councilman Canela.
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilman Southall.
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate the Exchange Club and thank them for their fine work relative to child abuse prevention, and congratulate Walter Appelt for his award and his services for working with the city in the EDA.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Andrews. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Only one thing, I just wanted to comment that I thought that was just great participation by the Girl Scout troop to bring in a solution and make a presentation, and we don't have that too often, but I thought that was just super.
Yeah, I wish we'd get better at that. But, no, it was very well done. Thank you to them. Also, thank you to the fire department, and I guess most people will see a new engine in town, which council got a chance to review this evening. Looking forward to placing something new in service, especially something different, and looking forward to the outcome of that. So appreciate, again, staff's leaning in to find cost-effective solutions to run the city through grants and through applications, which has been a big turnaround. So appreciate that, appreciate everything everybody does, and I will take a motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second that we adjourn. E.V., please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Canela.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.